Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for July 16th, 2019. Item number one, if we could call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Brennan?
Here.
Councilmember Lehman?
Here.
Councilmember Whiting?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
Mayor Mars?
Here, thank you. Item number two, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number three, Representative Brad Tapke is here to give us a session wrap-up. Welcome.
Thank you very much for, thank you for having me, Brad Tapke. Got, was elected last November as a representative for Shakopee, 55A District, which is Shakopee, Jackson Township and Louisville Township. So, thank you very much for having me today. I've been going around and talked to the county last week. And, am I talking way too loud? Okay. It seems really loud from where I'm at, so I'm just making sure. Acoustics in the new room are just amazing.
Yeah, that's one of our issues, yeah.
So, yeah, I just wanted to stop by and chat and see if there's any issues or concerns everyone, anyone here has about what we've done in the past year, in the past six months at the Capitol, and see if there are things over the course of the next year and a half that people would like to do. There's, we had, obviously this year, we had the budget year, and so that was, everything was taken up by, primarily by the budget. And there were some, I'm really proud of quite a few of the things that got done, really unhappy about many things that did not get done this session, but that is, I'm told, very much the way it goes at that place, as, as I know from, from our time here at the city. But there were a lot of really good things that did happen this session with extending the provider tax for healthcare, so that we didn't have a major, major meltdown in the healthcare in Minnesota. So, that is really good that that happened. We had a lot of more funding for teachers. There's a lot more funding for school districts and making sure that we have school districts. One thing that did not get done is transportation. There was basically nothing that happened transportation-wise this year, which is extremely frustrating to me. I was on the conference committee for transportation, and just to see the shenanigans and crazy things that happen at the Capitol when you give too few people too much power is really, really frustrating. But, we got a lot of good things done, and some things for Shakopee that we got done that I'm really proud of are that there was a major changes to how police forfeiture was going to work. That would have been extremely negative, so I worked a lot with Chief Tate on getting that killed eventually. I'm really happy that we got that killed. It was one of the biggest uphill battles that we had during session on our side of getting that done. We got a bill passed that allows the Sheriff's Department, the prisons, and police departments, if they want to, to be able to use body scanners when they're intaking prisoners and inmates, so that be able to check to see if there's any contraband. This is a big one for corrections departments, because it was just a goofy issue with the Health Department. So, we got that fixed, which is great. Soft-body armor reimbursements, which the City of Shakopee in the past has gotten soft-body armor grants from the state, and so this had run out, and so we got this all fixed, so that there's a lot more money flowing into that program, so their police office can be more safe. And, we got $250,000 for MVTA to run the 495 route, as well as the, something I was shocked that got done, and I don't know if you guys want to do anything with it all, but we got the ability to change your speed limits in cities, so cities can change speed limits, so you can raise them, lower them on all roads that you have jurisdiction over, which is, again, something I was shocked that actually got done. And we had a bunch of engineers from counties especially came in and yelled at us that we shouldn't do this and shouldn't allow cities to be able to choose their own thing. And I was one of the swing votes on that to say that, yeah, we should absolutely let cities do what they want to do. And so, that was one of my big things that the Capitol was allowing local control on as many things as possible. So, then the most proud thing that I am happy we got done for over a decade, almost a decade, we've been trying to get the Lights On Bill for Canterbury Park and for Minnesota Racing Commission, trying to get that passed. So, in 2011, there was an extended government shutdown, which shut down the Minnesota Racing Commission, which therefore shut down Canterbury Park. And so, it was closed for over six weeks, starting July 1 of 2011. And, so that kept Canterbury shut down, so they lost all their vets, all their horses, all their folks left, and it really devastated their season and almost put them under, and it was a really, really bad thing. When there's zero taxpayer money that goes into the Minnesota Racing Commission, it's all paid for by the horses and the trainers and the process itself. And so, they've been trying at the Capitol for a long time to get it done, and we finally got it done this year, worked really closely with Representative Albright, worked really closely with Senator Pratt on getting those things done. It was really good to have that. And so, those are some of the highlights of things that we accomplished that are important to cities in Shakopee. Something that doesn't matter for us as much, but other cities, we raised LGA a lot back to the 2007 levels, I believe is what it was, which doesn't sound good when you say that out loud, but it's a significant increase in LGA for communities that really, really need it. So, so those are some of the big highlights, and I'm happy to answer any questions that people have, as well as if you have, love to talk to people about ideas for 2020 and things that people want to get done, because we, one of the biggest things that I'm going to be working on for 2020 is, there's a lot of, which is no surprise to this room, but there's a lot of excess regulation, a lot of places where the state sticks their nose where they don't need to. And so, we're going to be trying to find and identify issues in places where, with 2020 being a short session and a policy year, of finding ways to eliminate work that the state does and allow the people who are really closest to people to get those things done. So, that's going to be some of my priorities in 2020.
Representative Tapke, thank you very much for that overview. And questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your service to Shakopee. I sit on the MVTA Board, and we appreciate all you've done for the 495 route. That helps many of our businesses in town. The Canterbury Park thing is huge for them, and hopefully we never have to worry about a shutdown again, but you never know that looms. And if you stick around on our consent items, we do have some items that we're going to present to try and get some state money for, and I'm sure you've been aware of that, but the 169 pedestrian bicycle overpass, we've talked about that for years, and see if we can get the state to help. And we're working on an innovation center, I'm sure you're aware of too, and then the Riverbank Stabilization Project, that's been sitting on a back burner for many, many years. So, any help you can do for that, we definitely appreciate that. But, but thanks for all your, all you've done.
Thanks. Yeah, with those, Mr. Mayor, with the bonding program, the bonding bills that are out there now, Mr. Reynolds and I sat down and talked about, a lot about what makes the most sense for Shakopee and what makes the most sense for our community, because, and I also sat down with Scott County, sat down with the school district to say that, hey, we haven't, these bonding programs happen, these bonding bills happen most every year now, and the big ones are every other year, and Shakopee and Scott County haven't taken advantage of it. The last time that we got any money through the bonding bill to a local municipality, there's been money coming into the prison through the Corrections Department, but anytime, the last time that any money has flowed our direction was for the scale training facility, and that was just a couple million dollars at that point. And so, I feel that we're due some money from, we're putting in a lot to the system, and we should be getting our, it's not a perfect system by any chance, but we're gonna, we're gonna work to get that money to come back here as much as we possibly can.
You mentioned LGA. Are we going to be getting a check anytime soon? No.
No.
Okay. I knew, I knew the answer to that.
Councilman Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Representative Tapke, appreciate you stopping by with your update. I'm going to ask the question, because it's recent and everybody's seen it on the news, all these resignations from the Department of Health and Human Services. I think the one was out under the administrative leave pending investigation for that daycare fraud stuff. An update on what's going on in that department?
Nope. That's a, that is an executive branch piece, and we don't know what's going on with that. That all kind of caught everyone by surprise yesterday, as that news, especially of the Commissioner resigning. And that's, the Health and Human Services is a huge, huge part of what the state does, and I'm most concerned with that as to how it's going to affect the county, because the money flows through the state, and it mostly gets implemented by county programs, it gets implemented in that direction. And so, if there's mess and big issues at the top, then how does that affect everyone coming down? And so, I think that if, over the course of the next couple of weeks, things don't seem to be settled down, and I know some folks wanted to jump on the fact that it's a big scandal and things like that, but there's, the governor hired 30-some different commissioners all at one time over the course of six weeks, and some of those aren't going to work out as well as anyone hoped. And so, I think that some turnover in there is, makes sense, and that that will happen to some level. But if it's not, if it doesn't feel like it's getting fixed, and if it doesn't feel like it is having some sort of resolution to it, then we'll absolutely, from, from the House side, have, hold hearings and figure out what's going on and what support needs to happen from legislative level.
Thank you.
Councilor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Representative Tapke, thank you for stopping by, and just wanted to say thank you very much for what you've done, what you're doing, and what continue doing. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Representative Tapke, thank you very much for coming here tonight. Certainly appreciate your support in the bonding efforts in the future. But I'd like to talk to you about something that I consider one of Minnesota's quirks. It's this concept called fiscal disparities. It exists nowhere else in the United States but Minnesota. And for those that aren't aware, it essentially takes tax dollars from communities that have a large industrial base and removes it from their tax levy and gives it to others who may not have as much industrial base. And that, that, that affects us greatly here in Shakopee. My goal in life at this point is to keep all of our own tax dollars, and, and those of our friends and neighbors who receive fiscal disparity funds, I wish them the best, but they should tax their people appropriately and let us keep our own tax dollars. And I, I, I've been part of several different committees that have been studying the issue now for at least the last couple of years. I would love to sit down with you to talk about the future of fiscal disparities and how we can maybe address that at some point.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, that is a major, major concern of mine. It, having sat where you guys are sitting, albeit in a different building, it hurts really, really bad when you look at the numbers to see, especially the money going to Prior Lake. That, that is just frustrating.
I didn't say anyone in particular.
But, it, no, that is absolutely something that can and should be looked at, and it's absolutely something that everyone needs to recognize. To get anything done and to do anything with that one will be a long haul of building coalition and building partnerships. And I have spent many hours already doing that and finding the people who are in the loser cities that pay into that program. And we started, not long after session began, we started a, just a group of suburban members sitting down, and so we got together every other Monday. And that was one item that we talked about a lot, and it's specifically the suburban members who get hit the hardest by fiscal disparities. And so, finding, we have people who are interested in finding and recognizing it as an issue that needs to be addressed, and I look forward to sitting down with you to talk about solutions, because I don't have any solutions yet.
And I'll be more than happy to volunteer in any way that you need to assist in that manner.
Thank you.
Well, I reiterate that. I know that the discussion on LGA over the years, and it kind of comes and it goes, and, you know, Shakopee is a very well-built community, commercial, industrial, along with its housing and everything. It's a well-balanced community, yet years ago, we got a hundred grand or 200 grand in LGA, and it came with some strings, and no thank you, we can operate fine. But then, on the back end, and if you take something north of a million and a half dollars out of our levy on that aspect, and that, that's a significant amount, and I think we should take pride in building our community well-balanced, self-sufficient for the most part. Other outstate communities, sure, could they use a little LGA where they don't have quite the tax base? Maybe that's appropriate. But to take away from a well-built community and give it to others that have, that are unbalanced, you know, I don't, I don't want to be rewarded, but I don't want to be penalized. And I would say that.
Councilman Brennan?
Well, Councilor Whiting and Administrator Reynolds both covered what I had to say, but thank you very much for coming. Fiscal disparities tonight, we're listening to a tax abatement for, for a business. And, and in here is, is the chart that describes the amount of money, and, and the amount of fiscal disparities that this business is, is generating and we're paying out is, is amazing. And we're talking about a tax abatement which is going to be less than this fiscal disparity. So, so it's a very, very important issue for us.
Oh, Councilman Lehman?
Years and years battling the same issue, as you know, Brad, Representative. But-
Brad works.
I think the important part of this is when you build these coalitions, you have to take into consideration the net gainers of, of the current formula, because it's, if you put yourself in their position, I mean, if you just revamp it, cut them off completely, I mean, it's, that's a hard situation.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, I think one of the ways of, of building that coalition is to take both sides, and it's going to have to be like a long phased, phased-in, 10, 10-year-type plan. And then maybe the LGA portion is back down on the large diversified suburbs and increased a little on the outliers. So, I, I think it's going to take, it's going to take a lot, like you said. I think that's one way to build the coalition, though. It's a fair way, in my mind.
Yeah, and, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, there's, that, you're absolutely true, that that's something that would have to be phased in over time. No one's just going to get cut off tomorrow. It's very similar to, in our House, Transportation Bill. We worked really hard for the lease vehicle sales tax and getting that more equally spread out and making sure that everyone is taken care of while the people and the areas that are getting, the counties that are getting the lease vehicle sales tax are still improved while helping everybody else all raise together. And so, it, it would have to be something like that in order to make it, make it happen, and finding those, those people that can make that work.
Great discussion. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much. And if there's, again, if anyone has ideas or thoughts or bills that you would like me to carry in 2020, I'm more than open to sitting down and talking with everyone and finding out what, what makes sense and what we can make, make work for 2020. So, thank you very much, everybody, for your time. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I forgot my manners in the beginning there, but I got it figured out after a little bit.
Very good.
Thank you.
All right, let's move forward then. Item number four, approval of the agenda. Any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do have one change and one correction. On 5A1, which are the minutes of our last meeting, the final motion, 10A1, should be 4-0 at pass, not 0-0. And so, that will be corrected at this point. Finally, we're going to remove item 11B1 and the corresponding item 3A from the Economic Development Authority Agenda as well. We had an, a, an address that was wrong, and I want to make sure that the public is aware of what that address is, and so, we're going to just bring that back in our next meeting in August.
Thank you for that. Others? If not, Councilman Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Contreras. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you.
Item number five, consent business. Any changes, additions, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Not from staff, sir.
Councilman Lehman?
5A2.
5A2, of consent. Others? Councilman Lehman?
Move the consent agenda as modified.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Councilor Brennan. Before we would vote then on that motion, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. And, Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for July 16th of 2019. 5A1 approves the corrected minutes from the July 2nd, 2019 meeting. 5B1 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC074, which sets a public hearing date for the vacation of public drainage and utility easements for Lot 1, Block 3, Windermere South, and within Lot 1, Block 1, Tice Highlands First Edition. 5B2 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC078, which sets a public hearing date for the vacation of a public alley between Scott and Atwood Street and 1st Avenue West and Levy Drive. 5B3 adopts Resolution Numbers R2019-TAC075, R2019-TAC076, and R2019-TAC077, which approves three applications to the 2020 State of Minnesota Capitol Budget requesting funding from general obligation proceeds. And finally, 5C1 adopts Resolution Number R2019-TAC073, which approves plans and orders advertisement for bids for the Wood Duck Trail Reconstruction Project, which is CIF-TAC19-TAC008.
I have a motion and a second on the modified consent agenda. The consent agenda modified has been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item number six, now I'd like to call on any resident that would like to come forward and speak on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Seeing none, we would move ahead then to item number seven, business removed from consent. And we have, we're going to see 5A1 back at another meeting? Is that in the consent as?
5A1 was the minutes.
The minutes, yeah.
11B1.
5B1.
5A2.
5A2, I got that, okay. So, we will move to the item removed from consent, which was 5A2. Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, I removed it, and I want to make sure I understand, because this has changed quite a bit from the original concept. So, if I understand, when we started, we were going to have, the developer was going to put up the money and get reimbursed from TIF, future tax dollars, and then now, through the course of changes, now we're going to issue bonds, and then we're going to take the bonds, pay for part of the improvements, and then pay for the bonds with future tax dollars?
Mr. Mayor-
Here?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, this is a declaration of intent. We did one of these back in January for one phase of the Canterbury Commons redevelopment area, and that was for the, kind of the 12th Avenue area on there. That was our intent that Canterbury is, is reconstructing or developing. Shannon Dohwa wrote at this point in time, they're taking that on. They're going to get reimbursed by future tax increment on that end of it. 12th Avenue, which we passed, a declaration of intent back in January, plan to probably issue bonds in September timeframe. That, there again, we will get reimbursed with future tax increment there as well. It won't be tax, general tax dollars, it'll be tax abatement dollars that, that come in to pay for that, that bond principal interest payment. And here, this is looking at the, the Baronshire piece of that. This isn't saying that we're going to issue bonds, but if we do issue bonds, it gives us the ability to recoup those costs and reimburse ourselves with those future bonds. So, we, you following me?
Councilman Lehman?
Yeah, so if we add up the various separate bonds for different pieces of the project, do we have a total on that?
We've got kind of a, a running total right now, the, like the 12th Avenue, I think we're, it's about a 3.2, 3.5, somewhere in that ballpark, if I recall off the top of my head on that, on that end of it. And that's for kind of most of the phases of 12th Avenue. There's a section that we'll be doing with the county in a couple of years that we'll probably have to look at the financing at that point in time as well, too. This Baronshire piece, we are just really doing the preliminary design work. There is, obviously still, we got to let bids down the road. This would be next year, construction-type project, those types of costs. And so, this is kind of capped in this phase of, of that redevelopment project. It's, it's capped at this kind of 7.2 million dollars, and so, that's the amount we're putting in there right at this point in time. I wouldn't expect the bond to be that big, but that's the cap we would have at this point.
That's for the one portion, not including the 3.2?
Right, right. This is for the Baronshire piece on the north side of that, of that development.
So, we're at 11 million. Is there any other future cost that we're going to end up bonding for? The 83, 169?
Could very well, we could very well end up having to bond for that. And it's, it's kind of planning that we're, we're going to do that over a course of a number of years to make sure that our TIF payments that come in, that the developments there to support the, the bond payments, and so that we eliminate or greatly reduce any risk of having to pay for that with just general tax levy. We want to make sure that there's development there, that there's tax increment there that pays for any bond payments, so.
Okay.
I think this is a federal law, that you issue a declaration of intent, and like we did earlier for 12th Avenue, this is for Baronshire. Haven't expended any money yet, but that will be coming. This needs to get queued up for the county project on 83, so that, because they're going to use that road, I think, as part of the loop around, right?
Yeah, I believe so. I think it's that intersection on the, on the north end up there that-
Is that correct, Steve?
Spot on.
Okay.
Yep.
More questions?
No.
All right.
Councilor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number R2019-081, declaring the official intent of the City of Shakopee to reimburse certain expenditures from the proceeds of the bonds to be issued by the city.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Whiting. Further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Thank you very much. Up next, 8A, tax abatement for KEB America.
Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, this, this says public hearing, this doesn't, so.
Good point.
Public hearing, right?
Yep, I apologize. Public hearing, yes, you're correct.
Make a motion to open a public hearing?
I have a motion and a-
Second.
Second by Councilor Brennan to open the public hearing. Further discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. The public hearing is now open. Presentation by Michael for the tax abatement for KEB America. Michael?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This, as you said, is our public hearing for-
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This, as you said, is our public hearing for property tax abatement for KEB America. This is kind of exciting, because we haven't done one of these in a long time, and in my previous experience, I've done dog food plants and ice cream cone factories and bus factories, but this actually is a company locally that is a real old line manufacturer that makes very high-tech gear today, very high wages, and is a pretty exciting company to have here in our community. So, this is their North American headquarters here in Shakopee. Now, people ask, how did they end up here? This company started originally as a joint venture with another company in the Minneapolis area, spun off as a separate company, was in Eden Prairie, and then moved to Mendota Heights, and then actually moved here back in 2005. And they currently employ 98 people. They've been growing ever since. They opened here in Shakopee. They have a payroll today of over $7 million. They have another 20-plus contract employees beyond that 98. They have more than 40 engineers on staff. They pay over $158,000 in annual property taxes. They are a world leader in their field of technology. They're proposing tonight a $7.5 million expansion, and match with hurrying over the next five years. Immediately, when they finish the building, they're going to be hiring 16 employees. They will still be paying all of the other taxing districts. The city would abate its portion for nine years. They would have to keep their current employment at 98 and maintain an average wage of $25. The maximum amount of the tax abatement they could receive over that nine years is $289,263. So, as tax abatements work, we're giving up our portion, but that is really decided by Scott County when the assessor establishes value. So, that's the maximum they can get. Might be less over the nine years, and it could actually retire sooner, depending on what the taxes are from the county. So, this is the current site. This is their headquarters building in Shakopee on Valley Industrial Drive. And the area for the proposed expansion, so they would keep, stay here in Shakopee, you'll see, one of the issues with this site is the rail line that came through the back here makes this kind of a difficult site, but they will be doing a $7.5 million expansion. So, they will be paying their current $145,000 a year still. The abatement's only the city portion on the new addition. So, this is kind of the concept plan. So, this is a two-story addition, because the site's pretty tight, with a new loading and receiving area in the back, and then a whole new parking area. While they're only showing 16 new jobs, that's a, I won't say a flaw, but a quirk in the state legislation. So, that 16 jobs occurs in the first two years, which is what we measure. You can see by the size of the expansion of the parking lot, they plan on adding a lot more people over the next five or six years. And again, they can't predict what the economy will be like when this building comes online, but they're committed right away to hiring those 16 people. So, this is, as I said, the proposed concept elevation, so it would be a two-story building here. So, this is their current corporate headquarters over here. So, it's office right now in the front, and you'll see, we have a little video they shot of kind of the industrial portion behind. Then, it'd be a two-story building in the rear, and then here's the new one-story loading area. Let's see if I can get this to magically work.
When I was in college, KEB came and did a demonstration in one of our technical classes. It seemed really interesting, and they're looking for somebody to work part-time as an intern in our electronic production. So, I applied for the position and started working part-time here back in 1997. Hey, my name is Aaron. I'm the service manager at KEB America. We work in the service department, supporting our customers. When I first started on with KEB, we were in a much smaller facility. We only had like 30 employees, and as we grew, we moved over to Shakopee into a much larger building. Now, we have about 120, 130 employees. We're looking at expanding our building, expanding our departments, our mechanical production, machining, electronic production. What I find, I guess, really energizing about KEB as a global company, with locations in multiple different countries, every couple of years, we get together for a large global service meeting. So, you get to meet and interact all these people that you email and talk to on the phone. It's very rewarding, knowing that you're working together as a team on something so large. We work very closely with our quality department at KEB America and our quality department at KEB Germany. What we see coming back from the field gives us a very good indication of where our strengths are and where we need to make improvements. Our ultimate goal is to deliver a high-quality product that's going to last for several years. We repair all of the KEB product families. Our large focus is on the drives, the inverters, anything from a half-horsepower drive to 400 horsepower drive. It varies day-to-day and what challenges we have with repairing. Sometimes, we also work on large drive cabinets. We're also responsible for field service at our customer sites. A lot of times, we go to a customer and help them with the application, if we can't resolve it remotely over phone support, team viewer. We'll go to the customer site, take a look at the application, maybe it's a parameter setting in the drive, hardware issue, wiring issue. We'll work with them on their complete application to look to see what's going on with our components, how it's working, integrated with the other components on the machine. So, we share load testing with our production. Repairers go through the same exact standards that new units adhere to. So, when we deliver a repaired product, it's at the same quality that our new drives are available to our customers.
So, I think what's interesting about this company, Mayor and Council, is that, so we have the president controller here, and he'll be happy to chat, but he's been with the company almost 30 years. She's been here more than 20. The gentleman you saw there, he started out as a college intern. There was a woman in a blue smock working on one of those pieces of equipment. During the recession, she got laid off at another company, got hired at KEB, only had an associate's degree. They paid for her to get a bachelor's degree, and she's still there today. So, they're really, I think, good company loyalty, longevity. They're very supportive of their employees. They must have 20, 25 of these videos online from their employees, talking about what a company, great company they are, because that selling gets their other employees, people to apply there to become an employee. So, it's really a cool technology company and kind of a mixture of old school. They bring in everything in there, from steel pipe, they polish it, they make all of the parts, and you can see from this video, everything they make that's out in the field comes back here into Shakopee for service and getting rebuilt. So, it's a pretty unusual company, that it's headquarters, they have manufacturing, distribution here, and they also do all the repairs here. So, it's kind of a quiet company that a lot of people don't know about, but you'll find their equipment in just about every elevator, brakes, motors. They're kind of the platinum standard in the industry, and we're pretty lucky to have them here in Shakopee. As you saw from the site plan, they could probably go anywhere. Their president currently lives in Burnsville. A lot of their employees live in Scott County and in Shakopee, and they'd really like to stay here, and we really like to keep them here.
Questions of staff? Michael, I do have some.
Okay.
Just on the parameters on this, that there would be a maximum dollar amount over nine years, and it's based on the additional value of their expansion. Is that correct?
Mayor and Council, that's correct. So, they'll still pay the $145,000 they pay in taxes. That's on the land in building today. The additional value would be the $7.5 million in the new construction, that two-story addition and the one-story addition in the rear. The only part that's being abated is the city's portion over that nine years. If the value over time comes in higher, that would be paid off faster.
And then, the last couple of abatements we've done, Data Card, Shutterfly, Rosemont Emerson, involves either the build-out or improvement to the building or expansion, also tied with jobs, right? Is that correct?
Mayor, that's correct. So, abatements are tied to both the improvement and the new jobs. So, Shutterfly, we've had, Rosemont Emerson, and Trust Data Card.
So, and they're proposing to add 16, the minimum of 16 jobs at $25 an hour over the next two years? Is that correct?
Mayor and Council, so they're going to preserve that 98 jobs here in Shakopee, because one of the concerns in speaking with our attorney is, you could have 98 jobs here, and as you grow, you would take some of those people and push them over the new side. We wanted to make sure they kept full KEB-carded employees at 98. So, as I said, they have 20 to 30 contract employees, but we wanted those 98 to stay here in Shakopee. So, that's, part of this agreement is, they'll keep the 98 they have, add 16 over the next two years, but they have plans to add more. I think Settlington could talk about the problem we have with the state. They only look at that first two years, but they wouldn't be spending $7.5 million on a two-story facility to add 16 people.
And then, follow-up, so, and that, these jobs would be monitored then on a yearly basis, like we've seen in the past? Shutterfly did not meet one year, so we held money back. Is that correct? And then, obviously, they came up to full speed the next year. Is that correct?
Mayor and Council, that's correct. So, this is monitored. Every year, we get their actual payroll and look at the jobs. That's what we, we've given you a summary, in your staff summary, of their current employment. So, we have a good idea what their hourly wages. They provide great benefits. We want to preserve that 98, and if that changes, it would kick back down their amount of their abatement.
Other questions of staff? Counselor Brennan?
Do you feel, Michael, that this adheres to our tax abatement policy that we have in Shakopee?
Mayor and Council, yeah, this is, I've heard from some of the council members, we need higher-wage jobs. You can see their average, I think, right now, of those 98, is, I think, $35 an hour. I think the agreement calls overall, they'll be at $25 an hour plus benefits. This is one of those great, high-technology companies that makes really cool things. It happens to be in Shakopee, that pays really well.
One of the major components of the policy is that the development would not occur unless we provided a tax abatement. Do you feel that that's true in this case?
Mayor and Council, yeah, I mean, I think that they're here. We had experience with another German company that should remain nameless, that kind of danced around, then ended up going to another city. I think we've got the president here, they like Shakopee. I think it would be in their best interest to stay here, but you saw, it's a difficult site. It's difficult to do manufacturing on two stories. They're committed that if this gets approved, they're willing to spend that extra money to do that.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, a couple of questions. The Resolution R219-080, second page, top bullet B, provision an estimated 34 new jobs to the city. We're talking 16, now we're talking 34, and I guess my question is, a couple of questions. Under the terms of this agreement, say the economy goes down, whatever the case might be, we're going to be guaranteed to maintain them 98 existing?
Correct.
Before the abatement stops?
Correct.
Okay. If the economy goes gangbusters and they expand and expand, what's the realistic growth in jobs above the 98, not including contracted? That might be a question for the president.
Mayor and Council, we'll let the president answer that, but the first two years, they're going to have that 16 jobs. They're pledging the 34 over the abatement. I think, in chatting with the president, one of the issues has been job recruitment and training. We did meet with all of the job training providers, indeed, to try and get them fired up, so that when they open, those 16 jobs can get filled. As you saw, it's a very technical environment. If you go online, one of the videos is a young engineer that's came there, and the amount that he's had to learn, because they don't teach a lot of this stuff in school, it's all very hands-on. I think the president will tell you, finding people even at this wage, it's difficult in today's market. A lot of young people don't want to work in a factory, because they have this vision that it's the old-school factory. It's not this high-tech environment that you saw in that video. I think it's a responsibility of staff in the community to get that message out, so that companies like this can stay here, and we can hire them more than 16 or 34 jobs.
Second question, Mayor.
Yeah.
Are they interested in partnering with the city and possibly the county and our incubator center that we're working on downtown for this specific application?
So, Mayor and Council, our consultant, we're going to discuss something later, but we've been trying to get money out of the federal government, and it's not been very easy to get that thing funded. I've gotten $9 million faster than I've been trying to get $50,000, but once our consultant's on board, he's going to go meet with companies like KEB, because when we met with Deed, and we just met the other day with Greater MSP, Greater MSP said, you know, every community has a sweet spot. They said, just looking at your companies and looking at the interest you're getting, here's your sweet spot, either regional or North American headquarters. So, we have a bunch of those that have office, kind of R&amp;D, manufacturing, kind of repair, and distribution. And if you work on that innovation center, kind of with that in mind, you'll be like no other community in Minnesota, because those jobs require very specific training, and no one's doing that training right now, because the technical schools are in a different way. And I think the innovation center is a huge opportunity to not only partner with companies like KEB, but other companies that are thinking about coming here from Germany and other places.
The reason I bring it up, Mayor, is because if the, if the economy is there for them, I'm about the job side of it. It looks like it's a great company, they, you know, treat their employees well, have a good product, but it's really about growing that job base. And if the economy is there, somehow, we have to try to make sure that they have the ability to grow. And that's kind of how I'm thinking about this, and I don't know, even if we don't have that center up and running yet, maybe we do something else specifically with them.
So, Mayor and Council, the administrator and I met with the Shakopee Minotwakansu community the other day, the school district, Minnesota State University, trying to think who else was there, Mr. Reynolds? The county. And kind of said, look, the university said, we're here today, let's address their issues today, so that we can build going forward. So, one of the things that's a little unusual at Minnesota State is, they already have relationships with all the technical colleges under an agreement. And so, they are hopefully going to meet with the business community in August and start rolling some programs out down here to meet the current needs today for these employers, because they see, we're pretty unusual. I mean, to have these kind of jobs in our community is not that common. I mean, there was another video, a guy said, everyone thinks today, manufacturing job, sitting at a computer. He said, here, we actually work with our hands still, and there's a lot of robots and stuff, but it still requires a human being to input and put things in the machine and watch it. And I think the high school is really interested, particularly with the academies program, to come up with a career path for those kids that don't want to get a four-year degree, but maybe they want to get an associate's. And companies like KEB, I mean, they run on that German model, where they're used to doing apprenticeships and internships. You saw the guy in that video started there as an intern. I think that we have a huge opportunity in this community to get those kids into companies like this, to show them, it's pretty cool stuff. And one of the really interesting things we heard is, you know, gaming, and I don't mean necessarily the gambling side, but kids playing gaming is really big these days. Well, that's kind of what this stuff's about. And to get them thinking about that, when they're programming these machines and robots, it's really all about kind of a game. And it was really exciting to see the superintendent, kind of, the light bulb went off in his head, and he said, I think there's some huge opportunities here in this community.
Counselor, I agree with Counselor Lehman. I think that every business in our community, as well as any business looking to come to Shakopee, would be looking at that, hopefully, the innovation center, Shakopee U, to, because employers want that trained employee, and on-the-job training or classroom. Not a day goes by that I don't read an article about the next level of training that is needed for the jobs of the future. And Shakopee U, whether they're doing it at the U or Outstate, I know even Amazon just committed $700 million to train their employees for the next phase. I think we have an opportunity, and even the companies, you know, Rosemont Emerson, Shutterfly, Data Card, they're all competing for engineers as well. And we, I think the Shakopee U would be a great opportunity. I think that businesses would want to be involved in that. I want to ask a further question on Counselor Lehman. So, the retention of 98, but is the real number? So the retention of ninety-eight, but is the real number one hundred and fourteen with thirty-five? Or is it ninety-eight plus, plus sixteen?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, the, the state law requires a business subsidy agreement when you have these kinds of transactions. And that, um, statute measures jobs after two years. The, the KEB, um, organization determined that they could keep their ninety-eight jobs here. Then they could add another sixteen for the first two years. Um, so there's a separate provision in the, the contract that's separate and distinct from the business subsidy agreement that says that they will also, um, hire eighteen more people by the, that five-year mark. So there's ninety-eight retained and there's, I'm going to do the math, thirty-four new jobs.
Sixteen and two, the, the total of thirty-four after five.
So sixteen and eighteen is the thirty-four new jobs, uh, and then the ninety-eight retained. If they do not, um, retain the ninety-eight and have the sixteen in the first two years, there, there will be penalties, the, the, um, abatement will be decreased proportionately.
Right, and I think we, we had that, uh, year, two years ago with Shutterfly for a, for a moment in time during six months, but, uh, I get that part. Okay, I just want to go over the numbers. Counselor, uh, Whiting?
Just to kind of add on to your discussion here, we're talking about, you know, thirty-four jobs over the length of the time. It doesn't measure the construction jobs for building the, the addition. It doesn't measure any impacts on the rest of the community that kind of ripple, ripple effect out. And those are very hard to, I'm sure, capture, but it, it, every job we bring to Shakopee has that effect.
Um, other questions of staff? If not, thank you. Would the president like to come forward and make comment on, uh, this application? State your name and address for the record and welcome to Shakopee.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, council member, my name is Andy Delius. I'm the president of KEB America and I reside in Burnsville, Minnesota. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
We've asked many questions of staff, uh, has our staff articulated them well back to this council?
I mean, I think most important for us is a lot of the, um, the topics were already addressed by Mike and he did a really excellent job of introducing KEB America. What we want to bring to Shakopee is again, the high-tech jobs. And, uh, I think we have proven that we can do it. We started in two thousand and four with around fifty employees. Now we are around, including everyone, we are one hundred and twenty-five. The goal is obviously to hire more than sixteen people. If I would have the people right now, I would hire them now. We don't have, it's, it's really difficult right now, and I think Mike also alluded to that, to find employees right now. We are doing our own training programs, we're doing internships, we're going to the universities. And we're trying to always essentially find our own employees, train them, like you saw our service manager. And I myself started at KEB in Germany as a student and it was almost thirty years ago. Um, so I'm very confident that we can get the job growth they are looking for. And most importantly is I'm not building a site that is essentially at the end has two hundred and thirty employees. That's the plan, um, and only hire sixteen. That would not be worth the time. See, we always want to build out the facility to the fullest capacity and that's an investment right now we are making. Um, I would say around one hundred and fifty thousand square foot, that's the maximum that site can essentially bear. So, that's why we are.
Counselor Whiting?
Any questions?
Yes, thank you. And I ask this question to, uh, any business that comes before us, asking for, you know, either TIF for a tax abatement. And to me, uh, giving away our citizens' tax dollars is, uh, there has to be more than just the jobs coming back. So my question to you is, uh, you know, what would have you done for our community as far as, you know, civic organizations or other things that you can do? Or what, what would you be willing to, to, um, consider in the future?
Um, we have done, um, some initiatives with the High School of Shakopee. We had the robotics club, um, we sponsored them. We do more with the community as far as finding, again, employees. We would work with the high school, the local high school here and come up with a good training program. Again, I'm used to the German model with the apprenticeship and I'm all in favor of it. But right now I, you know, we're, we're not there yet here in Minnesota at this point. I mean, I have, um, other business owners in Illinois, they have that program already. So you can essentially then train directly from high school. You take the kids out and you pay them and then eventually become employees. That would be my dream. So that's what I can offer.
Well, you know, Counselor Lehman and I have both talked about that in the past, about internships and, and, uh, you know, apprenticeship programs, uh, really kind of fit well with Shakopee and our, and our youth. And, uh, not everybody may be geared for that high-tech college job, uh, but, but, but there's some great paying jobs at, uh, the electronics and, and engineering, so.
People underestimate, you know, we're always looking for CNC machinists. And this is not like, uh, this is not that much labor, it's really high-tech. You have to, you're operating a half a million dollar piece of equipment. Um, and we work in medical industry, it's one of our major industries we work in. That needs a lot of accuracy and a lot of, um, I would say, knowledge to operate these machines.
Thank you, I appreciate your, uh, input.
Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
I'm going to assume that if you're making this kind of investment in this community for your business, that you're going to be active in the community. I'm just going to assume that, long-term. I got to tell you, after forty years in the automotive and, and watching the changes with the interactive computer systems in automotive cars and, uh, in the repair side, I'm just fascinated by what you make and how it works.
Thank you.
I'd love to see it sometime, just for my own curiosity and fascination.
You are invited. Give you, I give you a tour.
I hope you're extremely successful. I hope you add a lot more jobs than what you think and I think, uh, and I hope you make, uh, a, a great future for your company because your success is actually our success too, so.
Wonderful, um, more questions of the applicant? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anybody else would like to make, come and make comment in regard to this application, please come forward, state your name and address for the record and welcome. This is a public hearing, please step forward. Seeing none, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
I have a motion to close the public hearing, a second by Counselor Brennan. Uh, further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, public hearing is closed. How do we want to proceed? Counselor Whiting?
I'd make a motion to adopt resolution R two zero one nine dash zero eight zero, approving tax abatement agreement for KEB. And then it looks like we have another resolution. Want to do them one at a time?
Uh, let's do one at a time.
Second.
And I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. This is to adopt the resolution approving the tax abatement agreement and then we'll follow up if, if successful with approving the contract for private development. Uh, further discussion? Discussion, discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Um, Counselor Contreras?
I'd like to make a motion, um, to adopt resolution R two zero nine dash zero eight two, approving the contract for private development.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Brennan. Further discussion, Counselor Lehman?
I didn't have my team of expert lawyers read this over and give me feedback on the actual document. So I'm going to ask, why do we need a private development agreement? And what does it, what's its, what purpose does it serve?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, well, for one thing, the state law requires that you have a business subsidy agreement and that's, um, tacked into this agreement. Um, the other reason we normally would do a contract for private development is that we can enforce what the, uh, company is saying that they will do. So they, they give us something and then the city, um, gives them something. So it's a, a contract, we want to be able to enforce it. Um, and of course, the developer wants to know that we're going to do what we say we will do with the abatement.
So it's a two-sided agreement that covers both sides?
Correct.
Okay.
More discussion, Counselor Whiting?
I just want to make sure I heard the resolution number right, R two zero one nine dash zero eight two, I think it was.
Eight two?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I heard it right.
The private development agreement. Further discussion, 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 all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Thank you and congratulations.
Welcome to Shakopee.
All right.
Welcome again, I guess.
Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I've been informed, and I should have known this before, that, uh, uh, we actually probably don't need to go into recess for the Economic Development Authority meeting because, uh, because I pulled three A, three B, we have no way to pay for. So we're going to bring that back, uh, in the first week of August as well. So you will see three B coming back with three A at the next, uh, uh, Economic Development Authority meeting and council meeting, which will be the first, uh, Wednesday of August.
So, but just for technicality, this was noticed and papered. Um, shall we open and state we're taking no action and close?
I will defer to, to our attorney on that.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, you can either open it and continue it or you, or we can, um, uh, publish a new notice.
We can, what?
We can either open it up today and continue it to that meeting, which is an easier option, or we can, uh, publish a new notice.
Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'd like us just to open it up and then, uh, we can tell the public that these two items that were on this agenda will be, uh, carried forward into the next, uh, meeting.
Um, so then, is that okay? So with that, then I'll entertain a motion to recess to the EDA.
Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Lehman. Discussion, 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 uh, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Uh, Mr. President?
Welcome, good evening. Uh, we'll call to order the July sixteenth Shakopee Economic Development Authority meeting. Uh, please make note of the rule. We'll take a look and, go ahead.
Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to amend the, uh, current agenda by noting that item three A and three B will be deferred to our next meeting, which is August, um, August sixth, is that correct?
Seventh.
Seven, because of night to night.
All right, so we're going to ask for a motion to, uh, continue this meeting till August seventh, twenty nineteen at seven P M.
To approve the amended agenda.
Uh, to approve the amended agenda, all right. We have a motion on the floor, a second.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Mr. Mars, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes now, we'll look for a motion to continue the meeting. We can do that on the agenda item?
I did it by modifying the agenda, but I'll, I'll, I'll reiterate it in the motion to, to adjourn to August seventh, at which point item three A and three B on this current agenda will be forwarded to that meeting.
Would it be adjourned or continued? I guess we get with them, we change the agenda, okay. We have a motion in the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we stand adjourned.
We'll reconvene this July sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, City of Shakopee City Council meeting. Uh, we are on eleven A, financial review for June, uh, two thousand and nineteen. Darren, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Give me one second here to get this a little bit more readable. Um, yes, we are here to, to review the June financial report. June is our halfway mark, obviously, for the year. Um, happy to say things are still on a very good track. Things haven't changed a whole lot, they've gotten, they stayed the same, they've, they've gotten better. They've continued that success, um, throughout this, this whole year at this point in time. So if you look at your revenues for the year, for halfway through the year, we're at fifty-seven percent. Obviously, we're over that fifty percent mark, that's a good thing. Uh, June, we, we, we received our first half tax payment. Um, so that part that was, the part that had been lagging for the first five months of the year that we had, we had noticed on that end of it. Um, our licenses and permits, again, another two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars this month in licenses and permits. So some of those are licenses, but I think we have some, um, our vertical licenses and, and such like that that are renewing and those are a big piece of that as well too. But you can see we're at a hundred and forty-five percent of our budget halfway through the year, so. That's a good problem to have, it's just, it's this year, we got to worry about next year as well too. So we got to, um, it's, it's a balancing act on that end of it, so. One item I should note that I didn't note in the, in the council memo is the intergovernmental revenue. You see that, that's got a, a red arrow on it. Um, that's really just a timing deal. We get a lot of our state funding, comes after the, the beginning of the fiscal year that starts on July first. A lot of our police and fire state aid comes in in October. Um, if you look at the, the comparison from last year to this year, we're right on that same target. So that's not a concern at this point in time, so. Everything else looks, looks good on that end of it. Charges for services, that's a lot of your community center revenue, uh, sand venture type things, um, engineering services, those types of things that are in there, so. Uh, miscellaneous revenue is a lot of your interest. Our interest revenue has been really good this year. Crossing our fingers that it maintains that, that way, uh, that really helps our bottom line as well too. So you can see there, we've, we're at, exceeded our yearly budget already at this point in time too, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the revenue side before we flip over to the expenditures.
Special assessments, one seventy-one, is it, why?
Right, so we pay, so that's the deal where we pay Republic for their delinquent assessments every year. So that amount shows a negative in there. And so then when we collect that with our tax payments, it takes us the first half and the second half to collect that negative amount.
Okay.
So that basically equals it out or zeros out at the end of the year on, on that end of it, so.
Four?
On the bottom side.
Uh, any other on the revenue? If not, continue.
So if you look at our expenditures there again, uh, we're looking at that midway point of the year. We're at forty-seven percent for the whole general fund, so we're, we're just under that fifty percent mark. So that's a good place to be, you like to see your expenditures or your revenues higher than your expenditures at that midpoint. Um, there's only two red arrows, um, in there, one is the finance related and we've talked about that, that's, I know I get the finger pointing from, from Mr. Lehman, but I, I do mention that the mayor and council budget was over budget earlier in the year and that has come back in line. But, uh, really the finance one is related to the assessing services contract with, uh, Scott County. Uh, that was a, is it three hundred thousand dollars or so, somewhere in that ballpark that we paid in May? And so it's a relatively small budget, so that, the big payment kind of skews that and that will come back in line as the year progresses. And that's kind of the same for natural resources as well too. We have a tree trimming contract that we incurred, uh, the front end of the year, um, that we expected to take place and we expect that there again to come back into, into line as the year progresses. One that I want to point out a little bit, that I pointed out in the memo, was the street maintenance division. Um, that's at fifty-eight percent, it's within our, kind of our target at this point in time, but the street maintenance is a division that handles all the snow plowing that we experienced, a, a never-ending winter. Um, now in June, in the summertime, they take care of the, um, street, like the seal coating and, um, crack sealing and things like that. And I know we had a big expenditure for a big piece of that, um, in June as well too. So that takes on a big portion of their budget. So, um, we would expect, you know, we'll keep a, a monitoring the, the street division on that end of it because we, you know, we need to purchase salt again for next winter and things like that. So, um, there are some expenditures that we're predicting to occur within the street maintenance division at this point, so. Just want to kind of keep an eye on as, as the year progresses and we start working on budgets for next year. Any questions on the expenditure side?
Revenue's up, expenses down, that's good.
Good business plan if you can get it. Um, looking at the recreation side of things. So if we look at, we have sand venture, ice arena and community center that we've been kind of monitoring, um, for the last couple of years here, and we started monitoring sand venture at the beginning of this year. Tried to break out their expenditures last year, so we'd have that opportunity to kind of really isolate those three facilities. We can see the sand venture now it's July, uh, they opened June tenth, I believe it was, this, this summer. Uh, their revenues are down a little bit compared to last year. Last year they opened on June fourth. June wasn't the great month, it was, they were closed, I think, five days in June. Um, temperatures weren't the greatest, um, but I think the last couple of weeks of July here have kind of made up for that. Um, I know they've been really busy over there, so we'll expect those revenues, um, to kind of pot- pop back in line with where they should be at this point in time. If you look at the wages and benefits, the actual is, for the wages and benefits is about $33,000 higher than this time last year, and that's really kind of an accounting misperception at this point in time. Last year, we noticed in early July that some of the seasonal, or all the seasonal employees have been quoting their times at Community Center and not necessarily at Sand Venture, and so when we caught that error, we made the switch, and then we went back and did a journal entry, the first part of September, to move those wages over to the Sand Venture, and I think that was about $29,000, $29,000 of wages that we moved back into, over from the Community Center, over to Sand Venture, so if you add that on to the amount there, that variance is pretty minimal at this point in time. Their operating expenditures are a little bit lower, or $22,000 lower than last year. I think last year they had a, some media replacement for their filtration system, which was about $17,000 at the beginning part of the year, that accounted for that variance at this point in time, so. Overall, it's kind of early in the Sand Venture season, so we'll, next, it's basically over a month and a half here, so, or a month or so, we'll see how that kind of shakes out for that facility. Looking at the Ice Arena revenues, there again, we're having another great year at the Ice Arena, the revenues there are up $28,000 compared to this time last year, that's good news on that end of it. Expenditures are up, are up a little bit as well, too. Trying to think of what I had, but overall, if you, the expenditures are up, but they're within the temp where we expect to, expect them to be budget-wise, they're at really 45% of their budget for the year, so right in line with where we expect their budget to be, even though it's higher than last year at this point. Moving on to the Community Center, their revenues are up over $72,000 compared to this point in last year, which is about 66% of their budget for the year, so there again, if we take that 50% mark, they're at that 66 percentile of that, so that's, that's good at this point in time. We've talked about their wages, their wages are up a little bit compared to last year, and that's being, having a fully staffed piece, or fully staffed, staffed this year compared to last year. And then obviously their other expenditures, other operating expenditures are up due to some of the increases in the rent that we've talked about as well, too, so they got increased rent charges this year due to some additional capital coming on for 2019, and then some operating expenditures as well, with some increased activities taking place there as well, too, so. And then our deferred membership, that's the piece where the annual memberships, people pay for them, but we only recognize the membership as it's, as is earned, so if you pay for a 12-month membership, we recognize it each month, rather than recognizing the whole 12 months right at the start, so comparing last year to this year, we're right on the same pace, no difference really, so.
Questions, comments? Darren, I had, just, I'm looking at the bottom line on Sand Venture, the Ice Arena, the Community Center. Add those bold lines together, and I come up with a overall number of a negative $320,000 for six months, and then I just amortize that times two, this whole operation with our three facilities running at about 640 for the year. I think that number is down on an annualized basic, basis, pretty dramatically, down from 1.2, 1.4 million dollars. I do understand it doesn't cover that debt, but I made note of that and wanted to comment that the, I know that we're driving revenues, and that's good, we're holding the line on some expenses, I know we had the operating expenses kind of up on the, on the Ice Arena aspect, but that, you know, that's holding the line on, on the revenue aspect and the Community Center, but I think that, over the last couple of years, to see where it was and where it is today, I think that's a great job, so thank you.
I'm just the one that reports them, so I don't, I don't get, can't take any of the credit at this point, so.
It's going the right direction, that's good to see.
No, right. Other comment? If not?
All right, and then lastly, we started doing this last couple of quarters, I believe, looking at kind of our investment portfolio report, and that's kind of in line with looking at our credit rating, that's coming up in the near future as well, too, and so, I'm not going to go through every page of this, I just included the quarterly report into your packet. I had a shortened version of this, of this, which is kind of some of the highlights, which I'll probably get to here in a minute as well, too, but a lot of it's there for your perusal as well, too, and if you ever have questions on it, please don't hesitate to contact me on that end of it, so. This is our portfolio, this covers all of our funds within the city, we cash and, we pool our investments all into one area, so we can take a better advantage of a pooling piece of that and better investment rate of return and such like that. So if we look at, this is kind of the one chart that I look at on a monthly basis, just to kind of get a feel for where we're at, and if you look at the, this chart, and you compare it from one quarter to the next, it has lots of variations, and it's really market-driven. I had our investment manager a couple of years ago, when I started add in the income return line, which is the blue line at the bottom, because that's really where we need to look at, because we typically buy our investments and we hold them to maturity, so we don't necessarily, we're not out there day trading, so if our investments are up and the stock market's up, we're not out there selling investments that day to take advantage of gains, we buy them, we hold them, and we get the return when they mature, and that's typically how it's, typically how it's done. There are some caveats to that, but it's very, you know, 99.9% of the time, we hold them till we, till they mature on that end of it, so if you look at the one-year investment on here in the portfolio, gross, just looking at that green line, it shows the one-year investments, 4.78%. Well, heck, if I could get 4.78% on our investments, that's, we're doing really well, well, that's the market value of those investments, and so if we went and sold all our investments back on June 30th, we would have realized that 4.78%, but then it'd all been sitting in our checking account, and we wouldn't have an opportunity to make future investments down the road at a much lower rate at that point in time, so. Got to kind of take that with a grain of salt, that's why that blue income return part is in there, because that's kind of really the cash that's coming in to help build our reserves on that end of it. And here's, we have two accounts with Securian, this is our main account, that they handle a lot of the day-to-day investments on, we also have a smaller one that has anywhere from $6 to $10 million in it, that really handles our tax proceeds on a semi-annual basis that we use for a really a day-to-day cash flow, where this is kind of stepped out and laddered more long-term on that end of it, so. Here you can see we got about 47, we started the year, the quarter with 47 million, ended with 48, but if you look at the market appreciation in here of 483,000, that's that market value adjustment, so we're not booking that, we're not realizing that, that's just the way the market is. We realize...
Snapshot in time.
Right, we, we realize $284,000 of income coming in, so, and if you do see, we did have a realized gain or loss of $31,000, this is actually where we sold some investments that were, we had an opportunity to recoup those, that loss, at a short amount of time, and it kind of extend our maturity date, and so we're able to usually recoup those, and, you know, for six to nine months, we can recoup them, and then we gain on it for the next couple, two, three years on that end of it, we'll sometimes pull the trigger on something like that, so. One characteristic I always kind of look at, too, is our effective duration compared to our benchmark. Our portfolio is sitting at about two years, the benchmark should be 2.7 year, seven, five years, or two and three-quarter years. We're working with our investment manager to try buy some longer-term investments, some of our mortgage-backed securities that were, that were looking really good in the early part of the year, now interest rates have dropped, those, even though there'll be a 15-year mortgage-backed security, the usual typical life is only about 5.5 years or six years on those, now with the interest rates dropping, they actually drop back and become more short-term on that end of it, so it's kind of a, again, you kind of try to get that, but that's where our benchmark is, well, we're trying to get there to try maximize our return and keep quality investments in place as well, too, so. Other than that, it, this just goes through, lists all of our investments, here's our top 10 holdings, you can see a lot of Fannie Mae, United States Treasury bonds, those types of things on that end of it, so.
Questions, comments? Counselor Lehman?
Residential mortgage-backed, almost 30%. What's the, what are we shooting for? Seems like we're kind of moving up in that department.
And that's where we were kind of moving up, that's, that last quarter, we kind of made a conscious decision to go more towards that market, because we're getting a better return. Now that there, the markets, the interest rates are dropping, we'll probably see those coming, getting called and coming back in and having a different type of investment, so. We kind of look at what's right at the time at that point in time, so.
I think in late, in leading up through June, there was discussion about no rate cut, rate cut, or now that...
Now there's, right, now there's...
But there were some good yields there for a while.
There, there were, there really were.
Counselor Lehman?
And then another point that I always make, this shows roughly $47 to $48 million sitting here.
Your question?
We're flush with money.
Right, and I know, this is a question you ask every quarter, and it's a great question. I should have, I should have, I thought about it ahead of time, I'm like, I should have cut you off at the pass and got you there ahead of time, but I allowed you to ask it here. That is, so that's all our cash and pooled investments across all of our funds. We have many funds, we have 25 funds across the city, not only our general fund that we spend a lot of time, because that's our general operational fund, but we have our enterprise funds, our sewer and our storm drainage, we have our internal service funds for our capital, capital needs on that end of it, we have our capital improvement fund that pays for all of our reconstruction projects and our street projects and things like that, and so every fund has a specific purpose, a specific dedicated purpose, and has its own dedicated funds, so we keep track of those individually, we just take our cash and pool it all in one, in one area, so we can take advantage of some of the economies of scale on that.
Balance of all them different funds isn't above and beyond what's sitting here.
No, if you take, well, it is, because we have a checking account that's, obviously is not on here, we have...
Cash flow is out there.
Right, yep, we have that, so, between this $47 million and then towards the back, there's that other piece of that, so there's, I don't remember the balance on that, but it's eight or nine million dollars there. That amount, plus this $47 million, plus our, kind of our float in our checking account, which we keep minimum amount there, just to get through our weekly cash flow on that end of it, that's our cash within the city, so. At any one point in time.
Other comments, questions?
You want me to talk yield curve? Or are you guys good?
Yep, no, that's fine.
No. Bill's like, no, don't talk.
I'm sorry.
So the only thing is, you just want to kind of keep an eye on the two-year and the 10-year, so that's, if that inverts, it's kind of a signal that you might be going in towards a recession type of timeframe, so. So we're not inverted, that's good, at the, between the two-year and 10-years, so we're hopefully still, fingers crossed, going in the right direction on that end of it, but it's something just interesting to kind of see the different comparisons from each quarter to quarter, to kind of see, oh, that's, that's changing, so. But I'll leave you with that one.
Excellent. Further questions? Darren, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, moving ahead then to, 11B1 was removed off the agenda, we'll see that at a later date. Moving ahead then to 12A Liaison Administration Report, Counselor Brennan?
This is going to be a little bit different than normal. You know, when I do go the liaison, or act as a liaison, I think that I should be representing the council, which is the city, and, and also supporting the staff, and, you know, that's a, that's a very important thing to, to be in the, as a, as a counselor here. I do have an issue, though, I have, I need your advice on scale. I'm, I'm lost, I, so I need your advice, I don't know how to best represent you, I think that we have gone through, at scale, about six months of trying to figure out who we are and what we want to be, and, and we've gone through surveys, and we've gone through brainstorming sessions, and at the last executive board meeting, it was pretty much decided to do away with all that information and, and just move forward. So stay the way that we are and move forward. My problem, or my, my confusion is, is I don't know what that is, so I don't know how best or the direction that you want me to, to move in, in scale. There are components that I understand, like the regional training facility, that's, that's very specific, it has a, has a purpose, I understand my role there. We were told live, learn, and earn is a spin-off of scale, and, and at the last executive meeting, it was, mentioned that live, learn, and earn is not scale. I find a lot of good information coming out of live, learn, and earn, I'm on the Housing Committee, but we don't really do anything, I've learned a lot. And one of the comments made at the last executive meeting is that there's a lot of groups that have spun off, for example, those are, there's the Mayor's Committee, the Police Chief's Committee, the Administrator's Committee, but, and when I said, well, maybe we've just moved on and, and we're a different organization, the thought was, no, we are, we still need scale, so. I'm coming to you to ask you exactly what you would want me to do to be a member of scale as a liaison.
Counselor Lehman?
I, I think, and this is my personal opinion, but what scale originally was, was Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency, and I've asked over the last few years for a list of the efficiencies that they've achieved, that group has achieved within Scott County, including Shakopee. I'm not sure that I've seen that list. I'm not saying they haven't achieved, achieved efficiencies over the years, because they have, but I think when a group loses sight of its original mission and intent, I think you're a byproduct of that. There's confusion and people don't know what's, where they're headed, so I think it's always good to step back and take a look at the original intention and goal of the group and find out how best to do that. It might be efficiencies in areas that they haven't touched recently or in the past, but as long as it fits the goal of creating efficiencies for the communities in Scott County, it meets that mission. If they can't meet that mission, then I don't think there's a, either the name has to change, or it needs to be dissolved, because it's not, not effective. That's my 10 cents.
Counselor Whiting?
Well, they always, scale always brings up the points, and a lot of them are from the past, of some of the efficiencies that they have created, and some of them are the fiber optic looping and some of those projects, the joint prosecution, of course, Counselor Brennan mentioned the training facility. To me, when I was part of scale, I think some of the best assets that came out of that were, were the communications between the different cities, the county, the Medwakaton, the school districts, and maybe it's become a little too saturated now, I mean, every little group jump, wants to jump onto the scale bandwagon, I don't know if it's because of the great donuts they get or what, but it's, it's an opportunity to network, and...
Glazed or sprinkled?
Well, that's the point, it's sprinkled if you're from Shakopee, but, but, and I know, you know, Administrator Reynolds will talk about the Service Delivery Committee, and I'm hoping he's making some growth and process, progress there, but there, I think you're right, the, they had an initiative to get 50% of the jobs in Scott County, or the, the population of Shaq, Scott County, create those jobs so that people had the opportunity to work in Scott County, and I think that's where it kind of got spun off into the live, learn, and earn, and I'm not sure where that initiative went, I know Shakopee's done its part, but I'm not so sure everyone else has. But I, I struggled with some of the same things you're going through, too, so.
Counselor Contras?
I just, I think I'd leave it to Counselor Jay and Lehman, I don't, I am kind of in the same spot, too, I've tried following it, and, yeah, so, they have more advice to give you than I do.
My comments on it, I, I do think, too, it's lost a little bit of its focus, of original aspect... aspect from that founding back in 2002 time period. They do talk about some achievements that they've made, and that's great. Moving forward, though, measurable results and measurable either for the county or the cities that they represent. We all have a stake in scale. To drive on something that, that is going to be measurable, how that's done? Have we already done everything that we can do or is there more? I think it's time to think outside of the box, be creative and see where that goes. I know when I was on scale, there's certainly some meetings that are, that are confusing or, or, you know, that doesn't seem like you're making progress. So I can relate to your position, Counselor Brennan, as a liaison. But I, I think it's important that we still have a liaison that goes, reports on those meetings and, and maybe challenge the organization, too, to, to think outside of the box or what's next rather than, I know at times they, we had a, the former administrator of Prior Lake in front of us here, what, six months ago, and talked, tried to make a list of what they've accomplished. And, and that's all good and said, but I, I want to know, where, where are we going to be in five years? You know? And, and maybe we don't know what that's going to look like, but you should kind of have a driving force of moving forward. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, you know, I think what, what she's looking for is, she wants to be able to go back and say, I've got the backing of my council. This is what they're looking for. And for me, I'm telling you, it's, they were designed for the sole purpose of being the leadership group and finding efficiencies. That's what the name is. Scott County Association for Leadership and Efficiency. And we, we pay that, for that. We pay to be a member so that these efficiencies are found and shared amongst the members so that all benefit from these efficiencies or potential efficiencies. Granted, each jurisdiction has to adopt them efficiencies if they want to, and if they don't, then if, you know, that's fine, too. But the goal of that group and what we should, what I would like you to be looking for from them is efficiencies that, that they find that we could potentially implement and be more efficient for our taxpayers. That's, that's what I'm looking for.
You need more?
I'll, I'll come to a meeting with you or two, if you want.
You're always welcome.
Well, you did, no, it sprinkles? Or are you a glaze guy?
I put the sprinkles right on the glazing one. It's wet, so they're both there.
Counselor Brennan, did you have more on your liaison?
Yep, I went to the live, learn and earn initiative on housing, and there was a presentation by Beacon Interfaith. Beacon Interfaith has been really trying to get into the lower, lower, lower income and, and housing for that. I also went to Metro Cities, and I'm on the Housing and Economic Development Policy Committee. There's three meetings that will occur, and this was just number one. We discussed the 2019 legislative policies and, and so the next meeting, we'll talk about what we want for the future. And that's it.
Thank you. I appreciate that you brought your concerns of scale to our board here, and we all got, for the most work, got to comment on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Counselor Lehman?
I was going to say, I had a blast at the utility last night, but it was more like a splash. It was raining big time.
Yeah.
We talked water, we saw water, we heard water. It was all water. What did we get, three inches of rain? All right, let's see. There was eight outages, power outages, two of which were notable. Couple of them were just onesies here and there. One customer here, one customer there. 31 customers, tree from storm. Let's see, 90 megawatts peak, 102 is the record. And if the humidity keeps going, they're probably going to hit that peak. They gave me the water usage, but I didn't write it down, but it's going to go down because of all the rain, less, less irrigation, at least we hope. They did a good overview. There was an overview by Aylers and Associates on their comparables to a host of cities. You're all going to get that information. They passed that, and they're going to get it to staff and to each council member. And the breakdown of all of their different funds, like the city, they've got multiple funds, and the combined total of all them funds is the total like we just saw with our They had a good, good discussion on the e-bill deployment on their website. Lots of options. You can pay by credit card, is it ACH? Is that a?
Correct.
ACH, ACH check. You can do text, email or online. You can do one time. And if you're, I asked a question because it's happened to me a few times where you're on vacation, you don't have your bill, so you can't really pay it. And we all know that there's an occasion when you get your bills from, sometimes from Spuck, and it's like doing four days from the day you got it. It's like, okay, you're in a hurry, but you can't pay it because you don't know what it is and you're not home. So now you'll be able to go online or pay in advance. You'll be able to go online and make a one-time payment, and if you don't have your bill, you can look at your past history and see what you used that same month last year. Or if you overpay, it'll be a credit on the account, so. So I, they're making some good movements in the modern technology of the internet. They told me how it secured PCI something, not my forte. I guess that whole site, once you get into it, is another, it's not an in-house site, it's a outsourced.
Secured.
Secured company that does that, that does it with other places, too. So that's good. So that's what I have from the utility.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Whiting.
Yeah, a question on, and I didn't get a chance to look it up. When they talked about their Aylers comparables to other cities, were they the same cities we compare to, or are they the same type of cities?
I didn't have ours side by side, but I can, let's see, who was in there? There was a, I want to say 12 cities in there. I know Carver, Chenasson, Chaska, Prior Lake.
We don't always compare to our, you know, cities that are right next to us, but.
Some up in the cities. I mean, there were kind of a ballpark of them. One of the issues that they brought up under the, that study, that report was, there are four or five that are actually higher than us, and there's some that are lower than us. But if, but until you break down into each one, like there's some cities that buy water directly from Minneapolis or something, and they don't have some of these capital costs. And then there's others that have elevation issues and treatment issues, and there's just a host of different type of municipalities out there that have differing situations. And it's really hard to compare unless you know what the actuals are. And they talked about doing a more in-depth analysis, and I, that's going to come soon soon as they have more information. I guess they would like that AUAR, and I guess they're, they're starting to process, and they're going to plug that information in. I guess that's coming sometime at the end of this month or something. So things are actually grinding. It's a, it's a lot of good information, so that they said they'll be forwarding all that, so.
Thank you. I don't have a liaison report, but I do want to follow up for our last meeting. We had a motion that got approved to submit a letter to the utility with Counselor Lehman an eye on it.
I brought, I did bring that up.
Okay. And request that, that they answer the questions which they had tabled before or took no action We're going to be there on August 5th and talk about that, the letter from the city administrator on June 7th, that he, that the one that they accepted and took no action. So that will happen on their Monday, August 5th meeting.
August 5th, right?
August 5th.
I did bring that up at the meeting, and I actually, I was actually looking for Bill Mars. He wasn't there. I'm like, I thought we were going to bring this up tonight.
No.
Because when I watched the tape, and I was on vacation, as you all know, but when I watched the tape, it said at their next meeting, which was.
Right.
Last night. So I, I brought it up. I said, you know what, I know this is coming forward. And then they showed me your email that said it, August 5th. I said, okay, fine, but it is coming. And, and I reiterated to them last night that at the time that they took that action of saying, taking no action, I says, you're missing an opportunity to educate everybody from your perspective on these items. Not just those that are asking, but the general public. I mean, why would you miss that out? And I said that again last night. I still stand by that position. So.
Very well. So that'll be action on August 5th. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you. I had no liaison reports, but for downtown Shakopee and Chamber and Visitors Bureau, I want to make sure everyone's invited to Rhythm on the Rails, starting tomorrow night, Wednesday, the 17th. And the first band is The Honey Dogs, which I am not familiar with, but should be a good time. Hopefully no rain, and come on down to downtown Shakopee.
Counselor Whiting, isn't there another event on Thursday, August 1st?
There is. The Shakopee Heritage Society is having their Pathways of Shakopee History fundraiser, where you can still get tickets and they have a lot of great.
I have tickets also.
There's some tickets right here. If you need them, come on down. Counselor Brennan has some. Lot of prizes, lot of silent auction items. There may be a brick you can bid on. I'm not sure to pair up, so you can have bookends for your other one. That's going to be at Turtle's Social Club on Thursday, 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 August 1st at, I think, 6:30 social hour usually, and come on down.
Thank you.
I hear that there's Matt Lehman oil change coupons also.
There may be. We have to get and talk to the right people at the.
Have to talk to the boss. I'm just a piano employee.
Counselor Contreras?
No liaison report tonight.
All right, thank you. We had a, you know, holiday week here, so thank you. And now our administration report.
I just wanted to comment briefly on scale. You know, I've been here four years now. And throughout that time period, I've been trying to, I am chairman of the Service Delivery Committee at this point, and been trying to get the organization to look more forward and to have articulatable objectives with timelines of things that we are actually looking to achieve, that we can then measure as to whether or not we've been successful or not. And that's been a struggle. And I'm not willing just yet to admit defeat and, but I will say, you know, the, the, it, the city of Shakopee is a major part of Scott County. The city of Shakopee has had these concerns for many years. And the reality is, is that they're not really taken into consideration by the leadership of scale. And that was reinforced again on the executive meeting of last Friday. And, you know, that's, that's, look, gang, we're just trying to figure out what we're going to achieve, and then we want to be able to measure it so we can see if we've done it. You know, the live, learn, earn initiative, you know, we've been gathering data for four years now.
I want to know where I'm going and how long it's going to take and when I'm going to get there.
We're gathering data. Okay.
All right, thank you. All right. Other busi, or no, 12B, excuse me, the city bill list for our review. And if there are no questions on that, we would move ahead to other business. Anything else before this board? I would like to bring up a point that for the last, actually four years, every year, and including now in July, we have folks thinking about the holiday season in December, and been approached by some residents that would like to see some Christmas lights on a couple of trees that are out on 101. And I know the chamber does the Christmas tree right downtown, and that's great. But we have a brand new sign, a Chief Shakopee, and the Shakopee sign and the downtown sign. And there are a couple of trees just to the north of River City Center that, that could be lit. And I would like to get some support from my fellow counselors and direct staff to look into that. It might cost a little bit of money, but a, a very little bit, you know, some strings of light to light up two or three trees.
Where are these trees at?
They're really on the northeast side of River City Center.
I think they've been lit in the past, and somebody kept cutting the wire, but.
That was a long time ago, but I've been a, I, I have some persistent residents that think that's a good idea. And actually, I think it's a good idea to make our welcoming area that we, that we helped even more welcoming during the holiday season.
So we should post it? We should go down there and twist the arms of the management of the building and have them put some lights up?
I guess the question is, whose property is that?
I think the city should take the lead on this.
It's private property, isn't it?
Well, you get a permission slip from them.
It's actually owned by the city.
Oh, well, there we go.
Partially.
We own the land.
I would support any motion or any comment.
I would, I would support that also.
If we could direct staff to come up with a idea and a plan and cost, and just on a couple of trees, this is not, you know.
Do you want to have a staff member there in a Santa suit, too, every Friday?
Mr. Burkett is excited about that idea.
I got a picture on my phone of how excited he gets at the holiday.
I think it would add to the welcoming feel, especially by the residents and people that come through our community that maybe not go downtown, that just an enhanced little look for a month and a half.
We could turn the stoplight off and put a cop in the intersection dressed as Santa directing traffic.
Do you want a motion?
All right, no, a motion to direct staff.
I would make that motion to direct staff to look into the possibilities of lighting a couple of trees in the, in front of River City Center on the 101 side.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 14.
I make a motion to adjourn to Wednesday, October 7th, 2019, at 7 o'clock PM.
I have a motion.
Second?
I have a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion? 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 All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:45.
Yay.
Thank you all.